Good evening, welcome to the March 5th, 2020 meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our February 6th meeting?
I'll move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Not at the February 6th meeting, but I did record the audio, so I vote aye.
And Chair votes aye, so just a few things before we get started. The first thing is if all of you have, or any of you have, your cell phones on you, if you can do us a favor and silence them or turn them off because they interfere with our recording equipment. In addition, if you're inclined to speak to one another while you're in the audience, if you can go out in the hallway to speak rather than speaking in the auditorium, we would greatly appreciate that because that also interferes with our recording equipment. And lastly, I usually read the emergency exit procedures. In case of emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Please do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. Mr. Kelly. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item four on the agenda, which is K.A.A.R.P.
are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator.
Management Group LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-346-1-10.
Restrooms are located across the hall. And now we're going to go on to the agenda.
That's 17 Ludlow Lane in Hampton Bay.
It's a little bit confusing because our last meeting was canceled, so bear with us for
I move that we put that over to our April 2nd meeting.
Second.
a few minutes while we sort out adjournments. Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Item one on the agenda is O.P.H.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Building Corp., Suffolk County Tax Map 900-172-77.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, so what we're going to, what I'm going to do here is item six, seven, and That's 30 Ludlow Lane in New York. eight, which is all J-10 basically together. Going to put that over to our April 2nd meeting. I'll read off six in first.
Do we have a second?
It's 295 Montauk Highway, Inc., Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-3-31.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
That's 295 East Montauk Highway in Hampton Bay.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
I'll move that is put over to the April 16th meeting.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item two on the agenda, which is Michael Esposito and Louis Esposito, Suffolk County
Second.
Tax Map 900-143-248, and 730 Flanders Road in Flanders.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
I'll move that we put that over to our May 21st meeting.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Second.
Item five on the agenda, which is Christopher Norwood, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-5-2-31.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
That's 7 right away off New York Avenue in New York.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item three on the agenda, which is Old Quogue Development LLC, Suffolk County Tax I move that we put that over to our April 2nd meeting. Map 900-139-3-34.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye. That's 90 Old Quogue Road in Flanders.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
I'll move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Second.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill. Chair votes aye.
Aye. Item seven on the agenda is J-10 Holding LLC, 293 East Montauk Highway in Hampton
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-32. I move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item seven on the agenda is J-10 Holdings LLC, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-30.1. I move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley, I think you were with Mr. Kelly, whoever was the second.
Aye, it was me.
It was you, okay. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, so what we're going, what I'm going to do here is item six, seven, and eight, which is all J-10 basically together. I'll read off six in first. It's 295 Montauk Highway, Inc., Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-3-31. That's 295 East Montauk Highway in Hampton Bay. I'll move that is put over to the April 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item seven on the agenda is J-10 Holding LLC, 293 East Montauk Highway in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-32. I move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Item eight on the agenda, which is J-10 Properties LLC. This is 5 South Valley Road in Hampton Bay, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-231-1-30.1. I move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
All right, on the decision calendar, we have 27 Dune LLC. Move that we put that over to our April 16th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And then we have Mark Levin and Mariana Luce, two times here, but what I want to do is I want to move that we keep the written submissions open until April 8th with a determination on the 16th of April.
Second.
Do we have to do a motion to reopen?
Yeah, I move that we reopen.
Reopen.
It's Mark Levin's and Mariana Luce.
Okay, Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, reopened.
All right, then I move that we keep the written submissions for both of those cases open until April 8th, and then we have a determination for both of them on April 16th.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And Frank Franzenz. I move that we put that determination over to our April 16th meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right, then item 17 on the agenda, which is...
Hold that one. Okay. I'll do it after you, Jeremy.
This is, item 17 is Thomas Horst the Hecky Living Trust, excuse me, 700, excuse me, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-78-1-20.125 Major Spad in North Sea. I'll move that we put that over to our May 7th meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And then in the decision calendar, in this particular section, let's talk about Stephen Genovese.
Think we need to reopen.
Do you want to reopen that?
Yeah.
You said, do you want to keep it open?
Yeah.
All right, I'll move that we reopen Stephen Genovese.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And we did that for the written submissions, okay?
Yep, keep it open for written subs just till the next decision.
And...
I move that we keep the written submissions open until we have the decision determination on 3/19.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right, down to Marla and Michael Rothstein. I'll move that we put that over to our March 19th meeting.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
All right, let me figure out where the beginning is, and then we'll get moving. Yes, ma'am.
Who's the chairman of decision? Don't have anyone on your March 19th meeting for any...
We didn't do that, yes, okay, all right.
And we got April 2nd.
Yep.
Then you have 12.
Yep.
For 16, we currently have, we have 12, but we have one on the J-10.
Okay.
You could say either nine or 12, however you want to get it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay?
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
And as I see this, and I can stand corrected if anybody sees it different, we're going to item nine on the agenda, which is Lenora Behrens, 569 Montauk Highway, Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-209-3-76. Applicant requests a determination of the subject parcel, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-209-3-76. Is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels, and thus entitled to relief pursuant to 3/30-115D and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Would you like to open number 10 as well, since they're single and separate?
That makes sense.
All right, we'll do that too. And number 10 on the agenda is Lenora Behrens, 30 Highland Road in Shinnecock Hills, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-209-3-74. Applicant requests a determination of the subject parcel, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-209-3-74. Is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels, and thus entitled to relief pursuant to 3/30-115D and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening.
Good evening. Robert Fichetti, attorney for the applicant, Lenora Behrens. Pass around just a shot of the map so you can just get an idea of how these properties line up. It's 30 Highland Road and 569 Montauk Highway, both in Shinnecock Hills. 30 Highland is 37,870 square feet, 569 Montauk Highway is 35,465 square feet. Both nonconforming, but not by lot, is zone R-40. As you can, so 30 Highland, my client, the applicant, took title in 1989 with her father, August Behrens, as tenants in common, so 50/50. In 1993, August Behrens passed away. He was predeceased by his wife, so his only sole beneficiary was Lenora. His will was probated in Florida, but never in New York. There, a separate attorney is working on that now, but effectively my client has owned it since 1993. Conversely, I'm sorry?
Well, flopped since 93.
Well, yes, so 569, the next one. So in 1974, Charlotte Behrens, who is my client's mother, took title to 569 Montauk Highway. In 1985, Charlotte passed away, and her sole beneficiary, of course, was August Behrens, who passed away about eight years later. Her will was never probated, so in both cases, they're now being probated by another attorney. But in effect, all passed to my client, Lenora, in 1993. So they're, they're working on the probate proceedings so that they can update the deeds, but based on, based on those wills, the property was all in my client's name. So from, and to add to that, from 1985 to 1993, they were both in, effectively in August Behrens' name.
Yeah, I mean, it gets a little interesting because when someone passes away and there's an estate proceeding and a will is, well, if there isn't an estate proceeding, technically the property is sort of in limbo and owned by the estate.
Yes.
Until authority is, until will's admitted to probate and the administrator or executor is given, well, the executor would be given authority.
Yes.
Yeah.
And so, and then to sort of add to the confusion a little bit, in the town code, in the section, the continuance section, it says that the properties have to be deeded out within three years of the previous owner's death. So it doesn't even really, it gets a little, you know, a little confused, so we wanted to come here just to make sure that we are clear on what we have. The zoning, like I said, is 1990, is R-40. It was previously C Residential, which is 25,000 square feet, but that was in 1972. I did go to the tax assessor's office, and I included in the packet that I submitted, both properties have a separate tax discard. I did also search the mortgages for both properties back to the date of nonconformance. There were no mortgages on 569 Montauk Highway, which is the vacant parcel. There have been a few different mortgages on the 30 Highland parcel in my client's name since 2004.
Okay.
So those are separate. So 569, as I said, there's vacant, so no building department records. In 30 Highland, there's a CO in 1967 for single-family dwelling, a certificate of compliance in 95 for a swimming pool, and 2006 certificate of compliance for alteration in addition and a porch. I did speak to a couple of the neighbors, Beth McNeil at 565 Montauk Highway. She just had, she wasn't sure what single and separate, what we were asking for. I explained it to her, she didn't have any other further questions. And actually to clarify, Randy Reese, one of the other neighbors, did call me on Tuesday. I called him back Wednesday morning, but I never heard from him. Other than that, there was never any intention to merge these properties. As you can see, before, before Charlotte passed, they, they did, it did appear that they made an attempt to keep them separate by holding one in the wife's name and one in the husband's name, or actually one in the husband and daughter and one in the wife. But there was an attempt there. There are no shared improvements, there's no shared use. As I said, they only back up at the rear of each, of each lot.
This isn't actually a back-to-back split. In our single and separate decisions, there are reference in case law to back-to-back lots that are back-to-back split. This isn't actually a back-to-back split. We don't see them that often.
Yes, they have, both have separate road frontage, separate tax bills. Like I said, there's only a mortgage on 30 Highland and never any intent to merge. And they're both only slightly undersized, and we're not creating any sort of large nonconformity. It's R-40, they're 37,000 and change and 35,000 and change.
Just looks like the neighbor's using some of it, not your guy.
Yeah, it's hard, it's hard to, yeah, it's hard to tell where, with the G.I.S., how it exactly lines up, but...
They're both vacant?
No, no, 30 Highland has a single-family residence and success structure.
Yeah, that's what I was...
Montauk Highway, the flag lot has, is vacant. And primarily wooded, a little bit of space, but primarily wooded.
Yeah, and the aerial doesn't indicate that there was any, that indicates that it's vacant?
Yes, yeah.
What's the square footage you said for 30 Highland? Is 37,000?
37,870, I believe it is.
Eight seventy, okay.
Okay.
I mean, it sounds like it meets all the characteristics of, should have been single and separate, just father time caught up with the previous owners.
Yes, I think she just wasn't aware, and then obviously when relatives pass, there's a lot of other things to focus on, so...
Well, and we have a set of standards to follow, and it sounds like there's no intent to merge, and the history of it seems to bear that out. So unless we hear some information tonight from one of the neighbors or someone else who's interested, I don't think I have any other questions, any questions of members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be here this evening and catch up with the applications of Lenora Behrens for 569 Montauk Highway, Shinnecock Hills, and 30 Highland Road, Shinnecock Hills? If not, Cornelius.
I'll move to close the public hearing for all purposes with a written decision on March 19th, 2020.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Thank you. Thank you very much, have a good night. You too.
Item 11 on the agenda is 1179 Fireplace Road LLC, 1739 Millstone Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-13-1-72.3. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 3/30-11, Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front, rear, excuse me, principal rear yard setback of 62 feet where 100 feet is required for a proposed two-story dwelling on a nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Does applicant hear on this?
Yep.
I just need your affidavit of posting. Yep, come on up, I just need your affidavit of posting.
Oh.
Do you have that with you?
No.
Did you post the property?
Yeah, we posted property.
Okay. We'll second call you. Keith, we'll give you something to fill out.
Okay.
And we'll call you unless...
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, item 12 on the agenda will be Kathryn and Brian Turza. That's 38 Central Avenue in East Quogue, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-340-1-37. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 3/30-84D Pyramid Height for an encroachment in the amount of 252 cubic feet for a proposed detached residential two-story garage with storage above. In addition, applicant requests relief from Town Code 3/30-11, Residential District Stable of Dimensional Regulations for a principal front yard setback of 35.3 feet where 40 feet is required to legalize a covered porch constructed without the benefit of a building permit on a nonconforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Professor Mike.
Good evening. I just have to swear you both in unless either of you is an attorney.
Nope.
No attorneys, okay, so if you can state your names and addresses, please.
Brian Turza, 38 Central Avenue, East Quogue.
Okay.
Kathryn Turza, 38 Central Avenue, East Quogue.
And do you both swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Okay, if you can tell us about the application.
Sure, so we are proposing to replace our existing falling-down garage with a new garage with storage above it. The existing garage setbacks were 6.2 off the back property line and 10.9 feet from the side, and we're moving it up 12 feet and out, and both sides 12 feet, and then we're adding the storage on top. We don't have a basement, so we're looking for more storage.
Okay. Well, have you heard from your neighbors?
We've talked to, we've heard from three of them, and they had no issues.
The north and the west, so like both neighbors that are...
So we have five neighbors, but we saw, we talked to the north.
Two sides, the two little, the two corners, where are you putting this?
Yes, we heard from both of them, and they were fine with it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the other thing I wanted to ask you about is the covered porch constructed without a building permit? Maybe you can tell us a little bit about how that happened?
We bought it.
Bought the house that way.
We bought the house that way, so...
Okay.
Who's there?
That was already there when you bought it.
Yep.
So you don't have any information as to how that happened?
No.
Okay, the reason I ask the question is not because, you know, they're giving them a hard time, it's because we have lots of people in town building things without permits.
Right.
We need to know what, you know, how these happen.
Right.
How these things happen. When you are represented, when you buy a property and you're represented by an attorney, you know, sometimes these issues will come up, and sometimes they just get missed. That certainly can happen. But in any case, you don't have any information, you're just trying to fix things.
Yeah.
The relief that you're asking for is minimal, so I just can't see how any of the neighbors could be impacted by it, although who knows, maybe we'll have somebody here who has some concerns, I'm not sure.
Can we move it further from the property line, which is for everybody?
Yeah, yeah.
We have a big family, storage spaces. We're minimal. Yeah, I don't see a pyramid, is there, is there any mention of pyramid on any of this? Does it need to be?
That's what we're looking for.
Pyramid relief?
Yeah, so it's on the back property.
Tiny amount of pyramid relief.
252.
252.
We already are, actually, the existing garage is 156 over, so...
Yeah, yeah.
156.
Yeah.
The other thing I just wanted to ask about, on the survey, it indicates the sheds to be demolished?
Yes.
Are you both okay with us having that as a condition in the decision that the sheds be?
Yeah, it's a plastic shed.
Yeah, they're fine, they can go.
Okay.
Win the clubhouse for the kids. Yeah, they're fine, they can go. It's a clubhouse for the kids.
Okay, that's no problem. Well, we can't tell looking at it.
Does he say plastic?
He doesn't say plastic, maybe we should send him back and have him write plastic.
Plastic.
Plastic, movable, white, put together.
Okay.
Is the current garage a one-story garage?
It's one, yeah, it's a one-story garage.
You're replacing it with a two, which is why, okay, why you, even though you're moving it further away.
Yeah, we need more storage.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, the relief that's being requested is 252 cubic feet of pyramid and setback relief 40 feet to 35.3 feet. So, less than five, five feet of setback relief, minimal pyramid relief. Anyway, any other questions from members of the board?
I just didn't see that dimension on the porch. Oh, for the porch, never mind.
Yep, oh, let me see.
Yeah.
I got the 35.3.
Common porch is, you know.
Common amenity in that area.
It is.
Common amenity in the town of Southampton.
Yeah, yeah.
They get wet.
All right, so I wanted to ask if there's any, is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Turza? This is for property located at 38 Central Avenue in East Quon. If not, Mike, it's yours.
Okay, we'll close this public hearing for all purposes, and we'll have a decision for you at our next meeting, which is?
March 19th.
March 19th?
Second.
March 19th.
Okay, Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of the side, thank you, thank you for being here. You don't have to be here at the next meeting, you can just call Candace the next day.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you, have a good night.
Okay, I'm going to second call the item 11 on the agenda, which is 1179 Fireplace Road LLC. Did I read this already? 1739 Millstone Road, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900, there's 13-1, there's 72.3. Applicant requests relief from Town Code Section 330-11 Residential District's table of dimensional regulations for a principal rear yard setback of 62 feet where 100 is required for a proposed two-story dwelling and non-conforming lot and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction.
Good evening. I just have to swear unless you're an attorney, so if you can state your name and address.
Carlos De La Torres, 360 East 65th Street, New York, New York, 10065.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing about the truth?
Yes, sir.
Okay, if you can tell us about your application.
Okay, you can see I have a natural drain easement.
Large area in the middle of the property that you can't build on.
Actually, the building envelope is very close to the drain area. What I need is actually to move a little closer, request to move it more to the front, that way I'm not too close to the easement. That way I don't have to interfere with the, you know, fence the whole thing, and just, that's the only reason. I don't want to be close to, you know, I don't want to disturb the, not myself or the workers, I don't want to have somebody there full-time making sure I don't disturb the.
Drainage area.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Also, the topography of this parcel.
It's challenging.
Is a bit of a, yeah, bit of an issue in terms of building, what to put where. Yeah, okay, all right. The other thing about this is that this particular property, it looks like the, the setback relief that you're looking for.
Yes.
Is, is adjacent to, at least on the property line, a driveway, and then it looks like flags. Flag laws pretty much multiple driveways, so that.
That even adds to it.
Right, right, that adds to the fact that impact is, is minimal, yeah.
I have no problem with this.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Any?
Jason, Mike.
Any questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of De La Torres for 1739 Millstone Road in Sag Harbor? If not, Jason.
I will make a motion to close the public hearing for all purposes, and I will have a decision for you at our next meeting, which is March 19th.
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Thank you, have a good night. Bye.
Okay, moving right along, we're going to, item 13 on the agenda, which is Fisher Organizations LLC, 91 Priscilla Avenue in Flanders, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-143-1-18. The applicant is requesting relief for a lot area of 9,512 square feet where 15,000 square feet is required, for lot width of 50 feet where 100 feet is required, a minimum side yard of 12 feet where 15 feet is required, and a total side yard of 26 feet where 35 feet is required. Residential District's table of dimensional regulations, you know, relief from 330-11, and any other relief necessary.
I need the affidavit first. Okay, just hold on one second.
I see that the.
Hold on one second, pour for. You got us, you signed these, right?
I notarized them, yes.
No, but they're supposed to, Robbie, kill me. These are supposed to be notarized and sworn to today, the day of the meeting?
Oh, I'm sorry.
So you need, I don't know if you posted them, if you can just sign them again, okay? And then I will notarize your signature.
Down here?
Well, just here. The person who posted it is supposed to sign them, and then I will notarize you for later. Okay, the board has jurisdiction.
Okay, thank you.
How are you?
Doing all right.
So these.
Introduce yourself, Rob.
Robert Merrihy. I thought we had covered that. I thought these.
You did, but we, yeah.
This time of coronavirus, I don't know if any of the board members would like to look at these. It's just informal from the GIS that helps us to visualize the lot. I think you can put one of those into the file.
Who's the lead on this? Brian?
Brian.
Brian, could you pass those two down, please? Now, this lot has been through planning last year. And actually, the, the application is, should have requested, it's 13 feet on the side, so that actually gives us extra foot.
Rob, and just to clarify for the board, because Candace was out, and there was some acute confusion for the last meeting, the advertisement is not totally clear. This is really for both lots, right?
For both lots.
They're both exactly configured the same, the same lot area.
Exactly.
Okay.
There was a house there was built on both lots.
We wrote it up, not you.
Yes, and so the house burned down when it was in foreclosure, and the applicant purchased it and demolished the house.
I know.
So now we'd like to go back and subdivide it with the relief that's granted to what the original lot sizes were in that neighborhood. Now, as you can see, some of these, and obviously we're aware that this neighborhood was subdivided sometime in the 30s, pre-existing the code by at least 20 years, and so many of these lots are actually one-tenth, some are two-tenths. You have some certainly larger ones, but this does fit in with the character of the neighborhood. We're looking to build modest one-story house on each of the lots, and the relief requested, while it's not, you know, large, it does fit in with the character of the neighborhood, and it does enable the town of Southampton to continue to try to provide workforce housing and housing that's affordable for people so they can live in the town instead of traveling from areas west. And, I don't understand any questions.
So this already went to planning?
It went to planning last year, yes.
Do we have the copy of the?
It doesn't, it doesn't come with old file maps.
I don't think we're allowed to create lots less than 10,000 feet.
I want to say a special old file map. The special file map is eight feet, it's eight, it's just, this is not either district, it's not old file map, it's special.
The code just didn't allow us to do lots less than 10,000.
I, I think it was having to do with the special file maps.
Just those, that's it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, so other than that, we're.
Because otherwise, this would say not subdivisible.
Right.
Right.
I'm going to pass this down in a second, I just want to read it.
So the code for the area is R15?
It's R15, it was R10.
R15, it was R10. You're asking to create two lots of, or one lot?
Two lots just under 10,000 each.
Two lots under 10,000.
Not by much, though, Michael.
How much?
The key, the key part of what this gentleman brought forward to us, which I know is very attentive to you, is the fact that we can put some affordable housing in there.
Well, how do we know the builder's gonna, the owner's gonna build housing that's affordable?
Well, we don't. There's not going to be a restriction on it in terms of, of the sales price, but it's going to be in an area where generally.
Small lot, small house.
And property, property values are, not in, you know, Southampton Village, so it will be much more affordable than other areas.
So are we being asked to approve a subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
You're being asked for approval to create two non-conforming sized lots?
That's correct, which will be, pretty much, if you look at the aerial, you know, either the aerial that Mr. Hahn brought, or, or the aerial that we have, you're creating two lots that are exactly, or very close, to the same size as adjacent lots to the east and west.
Yeah, take a look at that thing.
Yeah, yeah, I mean.
Take a look at the aerial.
It's, it's pretty, pretty clear what, what this will be. This will be completely, entirely consistent with the adjacent properties on.
Character of the neighborhood.
Surrounding it.
We're not looking for any pyramid relief?
No, we're not.
No, so, and the lot area is 15, relief is 15,000 square feet to 9,512, and that may seem like it's, you know, not a small amount of relief. It's relief to create what is already consistent with, with adjacent properties, surrounding properties. And I suspect that, that a whole bunch of them, all, all up and down the, the street are, are very similar.
Mm-hmm, sure, I'm familiar.
And if you look at the abutting properties that are on, what is that road, on, I can't even read anymore, Riverside, those are all one-tenth of an acre, substantially smaller than what we're requesting.
Yeah, so, so lot, lot area, and then lot width, 100 feet to 50 feet, these are all, again, similar to what's, what is there, and then we have total side yard, minimum side yard, total side yard relief.
So it'll create two non-conforming lots in an R15 zone?
Well, keep in mind, create, it's a subdivision, so the planning board is doing the subdividing. We're just.
Granting the variance relief in connection with the subdivision application. The planning board has already reviewed it.
Got it.
Right.
Somewhere, I didn't see that.
A planning board referral?
We need a referral from the planning board.
Yeah, I didn't see one yet.
Yeah, well.
That's why I was asking.
Yeah, I'm actually going to do referrals tomorrow, they weren't sent out.
Okay, no problem, so.
You have them, but you didn't send them out?
We have one from, Rob gave us one from last year.
The last year, yeah.
Yes, but then we just refer back.
Yeah, which, which we typically.
And there's nothing stopping the owner from coming back and asking for additional relief in the future?
There's not, nothing stopping any owner from, from asking for additional relief in the future.
Right.
Unless there's some kind of a restriction and a variance that we, that we grant, but even then, people can always come back and make requests, whether they're granted or not is another story. All right.
We also, we also just, I don't, I don't know that Rob is prepared to talk about this, but we also, we, we sometimes forget with the creation of the non-conforming lots that we do have to have a conversation about exhausting the possibilities, yeah. The Town Code talks about when this board creates non-conforming lots, they're not supposed to create undersized lots unless, you know, unless we've got a conversation about exhausting pine baron credits, you know, so.
Have you looked into that?
Or if you can submit a letter with respect to that, or if you know if there are.
I did, in fact, I was looking over the last week, and it's, you know, the problem, not, that website that's supposed to keep an inventory of this is not very updated, so every time you call somebody, they're like, I sold that in 2007, I'm like, oh, good grief.
Right.
So, but yeah, I haven't investigated it.
There's like three people out there that have them.
Yep, exactly.
Okay, so I don't know whether there are credits available, or whether the cost really is cost, whether it's cost prohibitive. That's what I.
We need to know.
Yeah, maybe you could just submit a letter with respect to that. We have to wait for the planning board referral anyways.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'll do it.
I mean, like Adam said, they are consistent with the size in the neighborhood, so it's, you know, the density is sort of there, but it's worth.
Yeah.
Having it for a record.
Yep.
Because we could have a house, two houses in Flanders with Southampton Village prices.
Oh, yeah. All right, any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who'd like to be heard this evening in connection with the application of Fisher Organization LLC? This is for 91 Priscilla Avenue in Flanders.
I just, I just would like to say that I would look out and I would not look favorably upon him coming back in the future and asking to expand and not create houses that are in character with the neighborhood.
Well, candidly, the, the applicant, my client, is an incredibly intelligent gentleman, and there's no other relief that he would ever envision there. He moves on very quickly. He keeps me very busy.
Good, I mean, we need houses like this for people.
Okay, see if you can find some pine baron credits, I think that's the only question out there.
I will investigate.
Yeah, okay, all right, so.
Are we going to wait for that?
Yeah.
Well, we're leaving it open for written submissions.
Planning is going to be looking for that.
No, we have a referral from planning.
We're waiting for the planning board, too, Mike.
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right, so if there's nothing else, Brian, the case, the application's yours.
So we're going to leave it open for written submissions. How long for planning, Candace?
I honestly don't. You can do 319, if I don't have it, we'll just put it on to the first one to make.
Yeah, so we'll leave it open for written submissions to 319 for a planning referral and for an update on the ability to purchase pine baron credits for the difference that, from the lot area to what's required.
Okay, and then.
Are you doing a determination on 319, two or what?
We'll put it on for that if we have everything and see. If not, we'll do it sometime later.
Okay.
So when that closes, you're leaving it open for all purposes, or just?
No, I said for written submissions.
With no closure in there at all.
Second.
Okay, are we, are we clear? Okay.
I'm just trying to make sure.
Okay, all right, Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Thank you.
Thank you.
I know we have more, so.
Hi, Robert Merrihy.
Wait, he has to announce it, please?
Yep.
Please, please, Robert. Go ahead, item 14 on the agenda is Fisher Organization LLC, 148 Priscilla Avenue in Flanders. Lot number one, lot 102, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-120-3-22.3. Lot one, lot 102, the applicant is requesting relief for a lot area of 14,174 square feet where 15,000 square feet is required, 330-11. For lot width, for lot width of 50 feet where 100 feet is required, 330-11. A total side yard of 26 feet where 35 feet is required, and front yard sack back of 29 feet 2 inches where 40 feet is required, 330-11, 330-115C. This is a great write-up. Additional relief for a zoning district line modification in 25 feet, 330-167A, lot two, lot 103, the applicant is requesting relief for a lot area of 14,174 square feet where 15,000 square feet is required, 330-11 for a lot, for a lot width of 50 feet where 100 feet is required, 330-11. Minimum side yard at 12.8 feet where 15 feet is required, and a total side yard of 26.3 feet where 35, 35 feet is required, 330-11, 330-115C. Additional relief for a zoning district line modification of 25 feet, 330-167A, and any other relief necessary.
The board has jurisdiction.
Okay, if you can state your, your name.
Robert Merrihy for the applicant.
Okay, Katie, do you want this? This has, in fact, been before the planning board. Do you want these again? Were they helpful as visual aids? Sure, why not?
It's for this particular lot, these lots, you know.
If I pass you these, Mr. Chairman, would you please?
Yep, absolutely. Send them over to Katie first, and we'll pass them back.
Katie, you want one of these, babe?
I just want to stamp it for the original.
Okay, you can have that one.
Red that.
No, actually, no. Red that, I will.
Okay, so this lot, excuse me, is almost just shy of 30,000 square feet, and along the back of it, 25 feet in from the lot line, is a zoning district boundary of, that pairs a property at 25 feet, and I understand that this board can alter that if it's under 50 feet and we're asking for that request. The property currently has, is approved with a single-family residence that we are asking some relief. The house has been there, obviously, very long time. It's off to one side, so it lends itself well to subdividing it and creating that additional lot. And that, the requested relief from 15,000 to 14,174, I don't want to use the word de minimis, but it's, it's not a heavy lift, I don't believe, and from 35 feet to 29.9, which is almost 30 feet for side yard, and the front setback is only for the pre-existing house, because we've moved the proposed house, which again is a modest one-story, you know, single-family residence, back to the inconformity. And you can see that lot is somewhat larger, it's, it has a sister to its reading left, and then, again, you can see some of the smaller lots around it. So the relief that's being requested is, when it comes to lot areas, 15,000 to 14,174, so that's a very small reduction in terms of lot area.
I just want to add for this one, there is no requirement to investigate the pine baron credits or the TDRs, because it allows, there's an exemption that says undersized lots requiring minor lot area or lot width, and that's 20% or less, and this is, I don't know what the calculation, but it's definitely.
I think it's 5%.
Yeah. Um, yeah, wait, hold on.
Does it specify lot area on that? Yeah.
Oh, there's lot area, there's lot width?
Right.
Yeah, 50% reduction.
Lot width is.
But does the code talk about the TDRs?
Yeah.
As to that?
Yeah, well, it gives, it gives an exemption if you're looking for minor relief for lot area and lot width, but you're asking for lot width, so there is no exemption. I thought there was an exemption.
I appreciate you trying.
Okay.
So go find some pine baron credits.
I'm going to letter for that one, too.
Yeah, so the first thing I wanted to mention is the lot, you know, the lot area is, relief is, is minimal. So the lot width relief, this isn't exactly like the prior application in that we have bigger lots, smaller lots that are, that are adjacent. I mean, I mean, I think it probably overall is consistent looking at the aerial.
On the reading right, you have, you know, point two.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah, to the, the point two is the ones that are two lots over, yeah. Okay, as far as the lot line modification, we do that from time to time, just to have a lot be consistent in its zoning, and that's why I'm, I guess you're making that request. So let me see, yeah, the larger relief, I guess, is, is the lot width, and, and there is other, there's total side yard, there's front yard, on both of these lots. So this is again an application for subdivision, so the real, the main part of the application is for the planning board, but it, it needs a bunch of relief. This, this is more, more relief than the, than the prior application that we just heard. That is overall in terms of the numbers, the, the actual lot area relief is quite a bit less.
Yeah, significantly less.
Significantly less.
Why do we need the line moved, for the record?
Because planning wants it to be tidy.
So they basically advise that you request that relief from us?
Well, when I went through planning, I was aware that I was going to have to request that, but yeah, they don't want to, they don't want the, you know, latter, latter part of the property, you know, being R60, you know, and it runs right through there. So, yeah, they did request that.
Okay.
What line are we moving?
The R15.
The one in the back.
Line in the back.
Yep.
Are we moving the property up to that line, or?
No, moving the.
The line back to the.
Doesn't clear the whole lot up, though, that's why I didn't know why.
Okay.
It doesn't?
I don't think so.
Takes it back to the, to the lot line, right? It's 25 feet.
Is it just 25? Okay.
I think that's what the intention is, to have it be all in the same district, yeah. Yep.
That would tidy it up.
Did, when, when you were before the planning board, did they talk about like a flag lot or anything, or this was the preferred configuration?
Hey, we did, we had, we had drawn up plans for both, for the planning, and for a number of reasons, and this was a year ago, it was decided that was, it made more sense to do it this way. Oh, I know why it was. Because if you look at, and I don't know if it's on yours, but it has been flagged and resurveyed by Nate Corwin and forwarded to conservation, but the town, the property behind that is the town of Southampton, and there is apparently some freshwater wetlands. And so, you know, we have that 200-foot line, and if we had done a flag lot, I don't think we could have even put a house back there. So the way it works now, we're able to stay clear of that.
That line is the freshwater wetlands, right, that comes up, right?
Yeah.
All the way to center of these properties.
Yep. Okay. Well.[1727.84]
Yep. Anybody here?
Anybody here? Any other questions from members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening? This evening, in connection with the application of Fisher Organization LLC. This is for 148 Priscilla Avenue in Flanders. Not Brian.
Who's waiting, anyone, Candace?
Hmm.
Planning. All right, so move to closed public hearing, leave it open for written submissions. It's on for 3:19, and see if we have everything.
I appreciate the board's time.
No problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a second? Second?
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of the side.
All right, item 15 on the agenda is James and Phyllis Garrido. 29 Ocean View Drive in Shinnecott Hills. Suffolk County Tax Map 900-271-1-27. Applicant requests relief from town code 330-84D, pyramid height, for encroachment in amount of 3,250 cubic feet for a proposed second-floor addition, proposed roof decks, and proposed two-story additions, and any other relief necessary.
I just need your affidavit?
Yes.
Thank you. You can have a seat. The board has jurisdiction.
Evening.
Hi. My name is Michael McCrina. I'm the architect for my clients.
Okay, and you can just state your address and, uh.
21 Main Street, Stony Brook, New York, 11790.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you tell us about the application?
Sure. So my clients, Jim and Phyllis Garrido, are requesting an area variance for a pyramid encroachment of approximately 3,520 cubic feet. The reason for this request is to add a fourth bedroom to their three-bedroom house, and also to add an interior staircase and mezzanine to access their existing third-floor roof deck. The additional bedroom has become a necessity for my clients to provide adequate accommodations for their family and guests, and the interior staircase will be used as a safer, more direct access to the upper roof deck, uh, which my clients use quite often. The mezzanine space is to create the access space to enter the roof deck from the staircase and to be used as a space to enjoy the water view on a windy day. Uh, we feel there is no other option for the location of the additions in order to provide a proper master bedroom suite and to be located within the bedroom wing on this level. And for the upper roof deck staircase to be the, in a location that provides headroom to code and a location that doesn't interfere with the existing roof deck that's there now. The location of the proposed additions conform to each building setback with a minimal increase in lot coverage. Any other location, uh, on the lot would require a setback or possible lot coverage variance. Uh, the addition will not produce any negative impacts on the adjacent property since the property line is heavily landscaped with tall evergreen trees and, uh, and the addition does not encroach any closer than the existing footprint, which maintains a current zoning setback of 15 feet. The proposed addition is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood with similar eclectic, modern architectural styles as seen along this road, most with tall side walls and third-floor mezzanines to help capture the water views across the street. Um, the proposed addition will not have any adverse effect or impact on the environmental conditions in the neighborhood because the home was originally designed with a four-bedroom septic system in 1996 and only had three bedrooms. The additional bedroom will not any increased loads to the existing septic system since it's designed to handle four bedrooms. And I respectfully request for the board to understand the hardship my client is faced with in order to add an additional bedroom to his home and to create a safer, more direct access to his, his existing third-floor roof deck.
Okay. So have you heard from any of the neighbors?
The neighbor that's on that side? I haven't personally, but my client said he spoke to the neighbor, and the neighbor had no objections, he said. But I haven't heard it directly, so.
Yeah, yeah. So the amount of pyramid relief that's being requested is 3250? Um, it's, it's not a small amount of pyramid relief, but we certainly have seen much higher.
Do you have a cross-sectional drawing of that area?
Oh, sure. Drawings that were submitted. It was just a, like a little puzzle, trying to get everything to fit in there, that's.
Most of it is from this mezzanine level, correct?
What's that? I'm sorry. Yes, yeah. I mean, even if we put a roof, even just putting a roof over the master bedroom, which is just below it, it's still gonna encroach quite a bit.
No, but a lot of the relief comes from that mezzanine, third-floor area that was.
Yeah.
What does that mean, the third-floor area? I mean, you're not allowed to have three squares in the town. But as an attic, what is it?
No, it's.
It's an open.
From the outside, it looks like a third. So actually, most of the relief is coming from some, like, concern. Couldn't find the drawing was.
Got it.
Is there any way to eliminate that, because that's not living space?
Right. We could reduce the size of it, um, if that helps. I mean, really, we'd just want to get upstairs.
Yeah.
And, and off that roof deck. Right now, they have an exterior staircase, which is kind of dangerous, you know? Um, and it'd just be nice to have a more direct interior.
Boltet or a hatch, just something, because it.
Yeah.
We can't speculate as to what you're gonna do, but it looks like another room up there, and it's driving a lot of the relief, in my mind. I don't know how the rest of the board felt. I mean.
I agree.
It just.
I mean, if.
Look at it, seems like a third floor, and we're doing a lot of volume to get up there. That's what the concern is. What, it mentions, isn't that a closed area on the top?
Uh, that's right. I gotta need those drawings.
Sure.
But we can reduce the side elevation. I, I just need a landing, the mezzanine landing, to get up to the roof deck. That's all we're looking for, so.
I have no problem with the, the bedroom addition, but if there's something we could do with this, because that's driving a lot of the pyramid, and it's not.
It's so tight, just to get the adequate headroom for code, you know, at the same time. Like, if you look at the side drawing on the next sheet, I, I can, I, I mean, I can cut it back, uh, and just.
Well, before we talk about that, just wanted to kind of see where other board members are. I guess.
This whole area.
Brian, you, you and Mike.
I just think, it just seems, it's that height. It's like eight, it's like, uh, it's like 10 feet in there.
Uh, no.
At the peak.
Oh, not in that room, no. We actually, what I did is I dropped the ceiling in the master bedroom addition just so I can squeeze it in there. There are nine-foot ceilings on the second-floor level, and I did eight, a little over eight foot, just to get it to fit, so they can get. And then he had to step up to their old roof deck.
So I think Brian's looking to have, uh, the.
And maybe enclose, can you enclose the current staircase and not add that top staircase? I, I just think it could be reduced, but I'm only one member on it, that's.
Right. So I'm just trying to find.
Sure.
Just trying to figure out where.
I sort of agree with Brian, you know?
Yeah, I'm agreeing with Brian. A lot of the volume is the mezzanine level, which is not the living area.
It's a simple case that they want what they want.
Well, it's a design feature.
You know, it's, they just have this house across the street from the water, and of course, you know, it's all about the views.
And they want to be up there and.
They have this roof deck and, uh, they, they, you know, they have that exterior staircase and what have. There was a time in a couple of years back, I guess, you know, it's hard to maintain exterior structures, and his wife fell right through the staircase. Luckily, she's, she was fine. So like, that's driving that a little bit, you know, but, uh.
You have the existing staircase, which is in the front.
Yeah.
So if you enclose that, it can require no pyramid.
Yeah.
Or, or something, you know.
It's hard, you do that, and you, and you lose the window to the, there's a window in the bedroom there. If I enclose it, then I wouldn't be able to have a window, that's, so.
So are you guys okay with us kicking this around a little bit, seeing if we can reduce?
Yeah, let's see.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. All right, so we got, I think, uh.
Like internally, where does the staircase go up there? It just seems.
There are floor plans in the, in the first couple of sheets.
Right, but if I'm, if I'm looking at it, you just have. Where's the front? This is.
Yeah, it's the front where your finger is, yeah.
Yeah. So this is the staircase that's going up?
That's the existing.
That's the existing. So from in the bedroom, where's the staircase go up?
It's in, uh, right there.
This one?
Yeah. And the next sheet has the, the, has the floor plan. So like, all that attic space in the back, I can get rid of that and just make it just roof.
Yeah, but this is your staircase to get up here.
Yes, yeah.
This whole room is not for the staircase.
We could, we could reduce it, I have no problem.
But I'm saying, th- this whole room is what's driving.
Right.
The pyramid? So I, I have no issue, like, they want to have a room up there, is what they're looking for.
No, 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 not at all. They just want to be able to get up and get out. I mean, I just didn't want it to be.
If you came up here, I mean, they could eliminate a big portion of that and still get up and out.
If I.
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying this whole room, which is 13 by 11?
Yeah.
Is not what they need to get up there.
No, no, we can reduce that.
And that's all the, that's, I would say, a majority of your pyramid.
If we can, can I, the, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a catch-22. I mean, there's a lot of, like.
I have no problem with the internal staircase.
Yeah.
And if you even had a landing.
Yeah.
You know, you have a 13 by 11 room up there with vaulted ceilings. And, and I know what they're trying to do up there, I get it, but if you need that much relief, is there a way to, to reduce that?
Yeah, because a lot of it's that attic behind it, believe it or not. I brought that whole bulkhead right through the back, and the more they look at it, I should have just took that out. They don't, they don't want it, they didn't even ask for it. I just, I just had it and I left it.
So if that, if you got rid of that, and that brings the number down.
Yeah.
That would work for me, too.
Yeah. I could take that whole thing out in a heartbeat. I mean, but, you know, there'll still be a roof over the bedroom behi- uh, behind it, but they don't need it. They didn't ask for it, they just want to be able to get up and out in, in a comfortable manner. They also want it to, a gable roofline to match the other one, you know?
Yeah, that, this whole back area, which is. Hmm, what's that?
All that yellow and that side elevation, I'd be able to get a lot of it out of, out of the.
It's like 11 by 16. Which is all going through the pyramid that you don't need.
Right.
I think you can get that down.
Well, plus, you don't want to, you don't want to be seen as approving something that encourages a third-floor habitable space.
Right.
And that's definitely not the case.
I know, but that's what I'm saying.
That's what it looks like, right?
Well, I'm willing to do what we gotta do, but, you know, of course, you know, trying to keep the design that the clients want and, and trying, it's all these things I'm trying to accomplish. But, uh, I could, like I said, I, I, right away, I could take that whole attic out, you know, and that would, and just put that little, continue that back shed roof right across, and then that would take out a lot.
Could you not put this gable in the middle?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I think he was also trying to keep a little construction.
The front of it's balanced, I'm okay with it. I just think the pyramid has to be less, because you're using a lot of space.
I could reduce that.
Yeah, that's what I, and then I, then I would be okay.
I'm, I'm fine with that, I understand.
And we want you to have the time also to go over whatever you're gonna be modifying with, you know, with, with, with your client.
Sure.
Um, and then I know you're gonna have to deal with, you know, making, making changes to, uh, you know, the plans and the design.
Now, I, um, to re, do I have to come back to the, another hearing? Or can I?
I think so.
Submit as a closed discussion?
Yeah.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I think we, our agenda's pretty much packed for the next meeting, so I believe the first.
We'll be joining the first meeting in April.
Yeah, which.
If you get rid of that attic area, just, because you look at the side, it's like that whole wall across that takes up a lot of the.
Okay, I mean, uh, I can't just submit you the drawings for a close review.
No, we have to, we have to.
You gotta go home and do your homework.
It's the whole process.
And then come back and earn your money, all right?
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so we gotta get that, uh, review of the pyramid on that.
Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening? In connection with the application of Garrido. This is for 29 Ocean View Drive in Southampton.
Okay, so, knowing, we'll leave this open for all purposes to our April 5th meeting.
April 2nd.
April 2nd, I'm sorry.
I'll second that one.
Thought you were seconding.
Okay, Mr. Tudhill. Mr. Hahn. Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good night.
All right, item 16 on the agenda is Scott Stapleton, 3 Linda Lane in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-17-2-67, 68. I think I read this last time. You want me to read this? Huh? I want it to re-advertise? It's, it's my favorite stuff. A modification request that's been re-advertised.
Let's read it.
Wow.
All right.
So you're a happy camper, then, that's great.
Always. On September 6th, 2018, this board, by decision number D018114, granted the applicant pyramid relief in the amount of 431.32 cubic feet for a proposed detached garage, a relief to allow said garage to be located within the required minimum and total side yard for the principal dwelling. Subsequently, on February 7th, 2019, by decision number D019014, the aforementioned decision, D0108114, was amended to grant additional pyramid relief in the amount of 240.4 cubic feet for a total of 671.72 cubic feet and to grant an accessory side yard setback of eight feet as a result of the revised location of the proposed garage. By letter dated December 19, 2019, the applicant submitted documentation requesting that decision number D019014 be amended to allow an accessory side yard setback of 7.6 feet and a total pyramid encroachment in the amount of 751.81 cubic feet as a result of an error in the placement of the foundation wall of the proposed garage.
Board has jurisdiction.
Okay, unless you're an attorney at this, where you end, and you state your name and address.
Scott Stapleton, 114 East 7th Street, New York, New York 1109.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, if you do not tell us about, uh, well, uh, what, what, what we're dealing with here, which is.
Rather surprising when I got the survey back, and it's, okay, we're good to go, let's get the 7.6. I've measured 15 times, you know, to where the fence and the trees are, it's eight foot one. That's not the survey line. There you go.
So how did this error occur?
I laid it out twice, I mean, I'm an architect. So I laid it out twice with the concrete guy, no problem, poured it. For me, it was completely within. When we shot the line from front to back, that was an error.
Okay.
So it was just the, the skew of that line was off. So it was just the skew of that line was off. That's my guess.
Okay.
I mean, another point is not going to change my life, I could have been farther over, absolutely no problem, it didn't change the clearance of the house at all.
Have you heard from any of the neighbors?
No, I talk to my next door neighbor all the time, and he's like, "Garage, awesome, can I put a car in there?" No.
I would imagine if you had to move this foundation that was installed in error, it might cost you a fair amount of money.
The house relatively simple.
Okay.
The garage relatively simple, the concrete.
Just to have it in the file, I think we probably should have an estimate.
Give it this.
As to what the cost...
We're not moving it.
To move it. We're not looking to have you do it.
But we ask everybody on ASBILs...
Correct.
...that have additional relief to submit what it would cost to correct it.
It goes to a financial hardship.
Goes to a financial hardship, then that's one of the things we can consider.
Okay. Other than that, I think the modified relief, I can't imagine the modified relief's going to have any impact on neighbors, but you never know, maybe someone will...
I'm gonna say, someone's here.
Someone's here. Okay. Any other questions, members of the board? Is there anyone from the public who would like to be heard this evening, can I show you the application of Stapleton? This is for 3 Linda Lane in Sag Harbor. Okay, if not, I have to leave on the application. I will move that we close the public hearing this evening, and I will have a decision ready at our next meeting. Oh, subs, written subs for just the estimate to Candace. You can get that to her in about a week or so, that would be helpful.
Contractors are slow, so...
Okay, and so I will move that we close with written subs, Stapleton, and it will be on for decision at our next meeting, which is 319.
Second.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye. Thank you for being here, have a good night.
Thank you for your time.
Item 18 on the agenda, which is Bill Bettis and Stephanie Bettis, 65 Bayview Drive West in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-16-2-50. This is a correction. On June 6, 2019, by decision D019071, this board... This board...
(laughing). This board granted the applicant relief for a proposed one-story addition, a proposed deck, and a proposed patio with trellis. This decision was amended on June 20, 2019, by decision D019088, to reference the correct survey date and lot area of the premises. Lot area?
I'm sorry?
This is the lot area.
Whatever. Lot area. By letter dated March 2, 2020, Bill Bettis requested that said decision be amended to reflect the date of the revised survey, which indicates the correct address of the property.
Okay, I have an amended decision, that 65 Bayview Drive West, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-16-2-50. On June 6, 2019, by decision number D019071, this board granted variances for a proposed one-story addition, deck, and patio. This decision was amended on June 20 of 2019, by decision number D019088, to reference the survey date and lot area of the premises. By letter dated March 2 of 2020, the applicant requested that the decision be amended to reference an updated survey that corrected the address of the premises. Therefore, decision D019071 and D019088 are hereby amended to refer to structures as shown on the survey prepared by F. Michael Hammer Surveying, dated June 6 of 2018, last revised February 24 of 2020. All other provisions and conditions of these decisions remain in full force and effect.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
What decisions are you guys waiting for?
28 Kindles and Marie Borelli.
Okay.
Okay.
Ethiopia 38 Kindles.
Yep, and I have Borelli.
I have a decision in matter of application of 28 Kindles Lane LLC, 28 Kindles Lane in North Sea in New York, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-42-3-53. Applicant requested relief from town code 330-84D, pyramid height, for an encroachment in the amount of 481 cubic feet on the east side of the proposed two-story dwelling, and an encroachment in the amount of 40 cubic feet, 36 cubic feet on the north, and four cubic feet on the east side for a proposed detached garage. So you know that this application passes the five-part test, so therefore this board grants relief from town code 330-84D, pyramid height, for an encroachment in the amount of 481 cubic feet on the east side of the proposed two-story dwelling, and an encroachment in the amount of 40 cubic feet, 30 cubic feet on the north, four cubic feet on the east, for a proposed detached garage for structures shown on the survey prepared by Robert A. Smith of Squire and Soren Wiesemacher and Smith, surveyed April 19, 2017, last revised December 4, 2019, and the plans proposed by C. Lou, Architect, dated July 17, last revised December 7, 2019. The granted foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye. I have a determination in matter of the application of Marie Borelli, this is for property located at 61 Hampton Road, Hampton Bays, tax map number 900-294-26.1. Applicant requests the following variance, 330-11.2F, a variance from accessory apartment special standards to allow an accessory apartment to be located on a lot that is less than 30,000 square feet and any other relief necessary. The premises is a parcel containing 21,790 square feet in the R20 zoning district located at 61 Hampton Road in Hampton Bays. I indicated previously the tax map number. It consists of a two-story split-level single-family dwelling with attached garage, covered porch, and rear deck, four bedrooms, and we have COs for the structures on the property. We also received a letter from Louis Schwartz PE dated January 16, 2020, stating that the proposed accessory apartment will be 22.4% of the size of the total habitable space of the dwelling. It's type 2 pursuant to SECRA. At the public hearing, testimony by Marie Borelli, the applicant, and Louis Guccio, who was the seller of this property to the applicant, consisted of explanation that the applicant is seeking variance relief to allow a proposed accessory apartment to be located in the basement of the existing residence. Due to the fact that the lot size at 21,790 square feet is less than 30,000 square feet, the applicant is seeking variance relief for the proposed accessory apartment. The applicant additionally had requested relief for the accessory apartment that was more than 35% of the total floor area of the main dwelling, but this relief was withdrawn due to the fact that the proposed accessory apartment does not require this additional relief, based on the letter of Mr. Schwartz, dated January 16, 2020. The applicant lastly indicated during the public hearing that once the accessory apartment is completed, she will be moving to the subject property in order to comply with the accessory apartment law. There was no opposition to this relief. It passes the five-part test, therefore this board grants the applicant relief from zoning code 330-11.2F, accessory apartment special standards, to allow an accessory apartment to be located on a lot that is less than 30,000 square feet. The proposed accessory apartment will have the dimensional requirements and location as shown on the survey of Robert Holtzman, surveyor, dated August 11, 2015, last revised September 13, 2019, and the floor plans of Art Design Consultants, Inc., by Louis Schwartz, dated November 2, 2019, which were submitted with the application and incorporated herein. Granted, this relief is subject to any other permit the applicant requires for final approval of the accessory apartment to be built at the subject property.
Second.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye. All right, all set. You can actually get a copy of the decision from Candace on, we need it tomorrow, Monday, probably Monday.
Probably Tuesday.
Tuesday? Okay, Tuesday.
Thanks to having an audience for our decisions, usually nobody cares, you know.
But thank you for being here for it, we do appreciate it. And best of luck with your project.
Thank you, I just want to tell you that I officially move Sunday.
Okay.
Excellent.
Good for you. Enjoy.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
I have a decision in the matter of Curtis A. DePaolo, 5 Osceola Lane, Shenacar Hills, tax map 900-211-4, lot 9. I'm going to read the requested relief at the end. It's an 11,632 square foot lot in the R10 zoning district. Public hearing, there are testimony by Curtis DePaolo, consisted of an explanation that he and his wife would like to add a shed and a pool and a house addition to make additional room for their family. The house addition will add a mudroom and a bathroom. The existing house is 1,600 square feet, they're going to add approximately 400 square feet. There was no objection to the application, meets the five-part tests. Therefore and for the reasons set forth herein, this board grants relief from town code 1 for the proposed addition to the existing two-story dwelling, 330-11, residential districts, table of dimensional regulations, for a principal front yard setback of 21.2 feet, where 30 feet is required; 2, for the proposed swimming pool, 330-11, for an accessory distance from street setback, front yard of 22.1 feet, where 40 feet is required; East property line, Osceola Lane, and 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts; and 330-83C, yards to allow the swimming pool to be located with the required front yard for the principal building; and 3, for the proposed shed, 330-11, for an accessory distance from street setback, front yard of 16.6 feet, where 40 feet is required; East property line, Osceola Lane; and 2, 330-76D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts; and 330-86C, yards to allow the shed to be located with the required front yard for the principal building. All is shown on the survey made by Harold F. Tranchion, last dated October 11, 2019, and on-site floor plans made by Kellin Kraus, Architect, dated December 5, 2019, which show the existing and proposed improvements. The granting of this relief is subject to the conditions and such other permits as the applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the structures on the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
In the matter of the application of James Morrissey, 74 Henry Road, North Sea, Suffolk County Tax Map, number 90131-2-6.1. Applicant requests a determination as to whether or not a proposed attached two-story garage with attached storage is a subordinate or incidental building pursuant to town code 330-5 because of its size and proportion to the main dwelling and its use. In addition, applicant requests relief from the following provisions of the town code for a proposed studio apartment on the second floor of the proposed garage, 330-11.2F, accessory apartments, for its principal front yard setback of 20.5 feet, where 28 feet is required, 330-11.2J, to allow two access driveways where only one access driveway shall be permitted on a lot having an accessory apartment and any other relief necessary. Lot is 39,568 square feet, again at 74 Henry Road. It currently consists of one and a half single-story, one and a half-story, single-family residence with a certificate of occupancy dated June 20, 1973. The existing house is 1,242 square feet, and the proposed garage was over 800 square feet. The applicant did appear at hearings, and then when asked to make some adjustments to it, did come back and make some adjustments and reappeared. We see this is a type 2, and based on the submitted drawings, we found that it passed the five-part test. We therefore grant relief from the provisions of the Southampton Town zoning code to allow him to build a two-story garage with attached storage of 484 square feet foot garage with a 203 square foot studio apartment on the second floor, which totals 687 square feet, 555.3% of the existing 1,242 square foot residence, as well as a principal front yard setback of 20.5 feet, where 28 feet is required. There will be one driveway on the property. The garage and accessory department will have the dimensional requirements and locations as shown in the survey prepared by William Simmons III, dated May 5, 2015, last revised January 23, 2020, and the plan prepared by architect Scott Spella, Spellella, last revised January 14, 2020, which was submitted and are incorporated herein. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to the conditions and such other permits the applicant has acquired or may otherwise be necessary for final approval of this accessory apartment or accessory and freestanding garage.
Second.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye. I have one, this you want, wanted to do yours.
Don't forget William.
I'll go ahead, okay. All right, I have a determination in the matter of the application of Mohammed Sinhu. This is for property located at 41 Maynard Street in Riverside, tax map number 90138-211. This is an application to declare the subject parcel identified as lot number 90138-211 is held in single and separate ownership from all adjacent parcels, and thus entitled to relief pursuant to zoning code 33115D and any other relief necessary. The parcel is in the R15 zoning district. I indicated the address and the tax map number, it's a size of 7,868 square feet, consists of vacant land and is non-conforming as to size. However, there is a single and separate issue that is addressed in the decision. So testimony by Daphne Vaughn from Suffolk Environmental Planning, agent for the applicant, consisted of explanation that the applicant seeks a determination, and apparently that there is an issue having to do with the subject lot, which is lot 11, and the adjacent lots to the west, lot 12. Lot 11 is vacant land, lot 12 is with a residence. There was a period of merger that started in the inception of zoning, and continued until February 10, 1995, between lot 11 and lot 12 in terms of common ownership, when lot 12 in 1995 was sold to the applicant, and actually then lot 12 was sold to the applicant, but they had switched ownership, which is why I kind of got a little confused. Anyway, so there's a period of time of common ownership, however, there are separate tax map numbers, separate street addresses, they've been taxed separately, separate deeds, no evidence of intent of current or prior owners to merge lots 11 and 12, and the proposed, or lot 11 is similar in size to lots in the immediate vicinity, there was no opposition. So we first, we address the possible merger of lot 11 and lot 12, we find that, this board finds that no merger occurred, because lot 12, the adjacent property was approved without reference to lot 11. The subject lot, lot 11, and adjacent lot 12 were never used in conjunction with one another, that lot 11 did not materially enhance the value or utility of lot 12, and lot 12 would not add any value to, lot 11 would not add any value to lot 12, the lot with which it is alleged to have merged. It's not a back-to-back split, however, the two parcels currently have separate deeds, separate tax map numbers have shown, been shown not to have been used in conjunction one another with one another, and that the subject property is similar in size to surrounding parcels are also relevant factors herein. Based on the evidence and testimony presented, this board finds that no merger occurred as a matter of law between the subject lot, lot 11, and adjacent lot 12, thus the subject premises should be treated as a separate lot. It is single and separate based on the fact that no legal merger occurred, and also that it is similar in size to other parcels on Maynard Street and Riverside. However, see footnote 1 below, this decision does not address whether or not this lot has road frontage slash access. Based on the foregoing, since the applicant has established as a matter of law that pursuant to zoning, the Southampton Town Code, an applicable case law, that the subject lot, lot 11, and adjacent, legal adjacent lots to the west, lot 12, have not merged as a matter of law, this board finds that the applicant does not require variance relief to establish the status of this parcel as a single and separate lot. Therefore, this board concludes that that lot 11 is a valid and single and separate lot with a size of 7,868 square feet, that lot 11 is non-conforming as to size, and is therefore entitled to relief pursuant to zoning code 33115 based on the foregoing. All are shown on the survey of Martin Donald Hand Surveyor, dated September 26, 2019, last revised November 18, 2019, which was submitted with this, with the application as incorporated herein.
Second.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
I have a decision of William Williams, 3 Ring Neck Road, Remsenberg, New York. This is R40 zoning district, approximately 43,200 square feet in size. I will read the relief at the end. The following testimony was submitted at the public hearing on this matter, Jim Hume, Esquire, and architect William Heine appeared on behalf of the applicant stating that he proposes improvements to the premises that require variances. Mr. Hume explained that the applicant plans to construct a pool, a two-story addition, a covered porch, and decks, as well as to convert, convert the existing garage to a pool house. Mr. Hume noted, however, that the addition, covered porch, and one-story bay window requires variances. Mr. Hume informed the board that the premises narrow, as is the existing dwelling, and limits the area where an addition can be proposed. Likewise, Mr. Hume asserted that the proposal is consistent with the character of the neighborhood and results in a net increase in lot coverage of only 689 square feet, which will not result in any impact on the community. It passes the five-part test, therefore, this board grants relief from town code section 330-11 for a front yard setback of 57.4 feet, where 60 feet is required to permit the construction of a front-covered porch. Town code section 330-115C for rear yard setback of 56.9 feet, where 68 feet is permitted to permit the construction of a two-story addition, screened porch, and a master bedroom expansion, and town code section 330-11 for rear yard setback of 68 feet, where 70 feet is required for the relocation of a bay window for structures as shown on the survey prepared by Martin Donald Hand, Hands-on Surveying, dated June 9, 2018, last revised September 28, 2019, and the plans prepared by William Frederick Heine are a dated September 13, 2019. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Give it a second, okay. Make your sweat there. Okay, Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Aye.
I am recused on this application.
Okay, Mr. DeSessa.
Aye.
Chair of us, aye.
I have a determination in the application of Alfred and Victoria Steiner, 163 Church Lane in Bridgehampton, Suffolk County Tax Map, 900-86-4-8.1. I will read the relief at the end. The applicant was here to get relief for a tennis court, and they ended up shrinking down the tennis court, so they wouldn't need as much relief as far as lot coverage is concerned, and also setback relief, they increased the setback relief. We listened to a lot of testimony here from various people out of the Bridgehampton community. I think myself personally, the vibe I got is they were more annoyed with the fact of the size of the house in the area, but the applicant's not here for relief for the size of the house or anything like that, so. Therefore, it passes the five-part test, so therefore the board grants relief from town code 330-77D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in resident districts for a proposed rear yard lot coverage of 29.92%, where a maximum of 20% is permitted for the location of a 55 by 110 tennis court, as shown on the survey prepared by Stephen Borowski, dated April 19, 2019, last revised January 6, 2020. Granted, the foregoing relief is subject to the tennis court being landscaped and screened across the entire rear property lines, and such screen being maintained by the applicant and all subsequent property owners. And such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Daly.
Nay.
Mr. DeSessa.
No.
Chair of us, aye.
I have a decision in the matter of On the Canal Apartment Owners Corp., 12 East Tiana Road, Hampton Bays, New York, tax map 900-258-1, lot 8.1. I'm going to read the requested relief at the end. Public hearing, Kim Judd and John Bennett of Bennett &amp; Reed appeared on behalf of the applicant, stating that the owner of the unit proposes a 360 square foot addition. is currently comprised of seven hundred and sixty-three square feet. Ms. Judd stated that the unit owner Charles, and Charles Brossman confirmed that the unit owners would like to add three hundred and sixty square feet to construct an office and an exercise room, and that the addition will not have any impact on the neighborhood or character in the community. Meets the five-part tests, therefore, and for the reasons before mentioned, this board grants relief from town code three thirty dash one fifty-five D, conversion to the residential condominium or residential cooperative, to permit a three hundred and sixty square foot expansion of unit nine, which is located on a parcel with ten residential cooperatives, where the existing density of ten units exceeds the maximum, maximum density allowable in the R forty zoning district, as shown on the survey prepared by John C. Ayler, land surveyor, surveyed on July eleventh, two thousand eighteen, last revised November fifth, two thousand eighteen, and the plans prepared by Robert A. Stevenson of MLDS Architects LLP, dated June twenty-first, two thousand seventeen, last dated August twenty-second, two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mr. Hahn.
Aye.
Mr. Tudhill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. De Sessa.
Aye.
Chair of the side. Push to close.
Second.
One favor.